Few cars here. Hopefully it's right, I hope so. Is the orientation right? Okay, thank you, Kristi. Phew, I was worried about that. I am not messing with it. Well, I got Marty with me. Hello, how are y'all doing? He's uh, here just to see what's going on, he's looking for some property around here. Hello, how you doing? How are you doing this, Joy?
You want this?
Yeah.
I gotta go pay my water bill. I'm coming.
Got some more people pulling up. Yeah, just stay out here by the road if you... Oh yeah, you could, I think there's Astro over there. So how are y'all doing? I didn't tell anybody I was going live. I just decided to come to the town hall meeting and um, see how things were going this year. Not that I know of, I haven't been in there. Timothy, I uh, just outside here, I haven't made it in. Y'all are welcome. I was bored at home, so I figured I would just come and see what's going on tonight at the town meeting. I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all. Wearing my shirt today. Or this evening. Living the country life with Thomas Collins, um, motor shirt, thank you mo. Ah, I think he is here, I think I did see him when I pulled up. I just parked right there on the edge of the grass. So I think he is here, don't quote me on that, like I said, I haven't been in the building, so not sure. I've seen the man one time. Um, and that was at the meeting here last time he, um, we had that altercation or whatever you wanna call it. Come back here and look at the park. Richard got it cleaned up? Six thirty-nine. Twenty minutes. Hello, little dude. How you doing Rebecca? What's up, little dude? How are you? We're live, so. I said we're live. We're live, live, live. The old famous uh, fire hydrants here. There's probably gonna be a lot of talking and chatting on here to the meeting, we got twenty minutes till. So when the meeting gets started, I'll go in, I might go in a few minutes before. Um, and uh, sit down and video, but until then, I'm gonna chill out here. But when this video's all done, I'll post it up and put a thumbnail on it and um, if y'all wanna watch it, y'all can skip through all this talking and chatting it up out here and just go straight to the meeting and watch it from there until adjourned. So. Right now, it's nice and quiet. Looks like we got some people coming up. Richard. How are you doing? Good, good. Doing pretty good. How you doing, Richard?
How are you?
Good, good. I ain't seen you since New Year's, Happy New Year's, brother.
I know. I was having your dad home.
Good, good, dad was blessed, man, it was good, you know? It's a little, uh, it's um, different, you know, cuz I was young when he went and I'm a grown man now, so.
Yeah.
But.
Glad he's home.
Yes, thank you, Richard, thank you, means a lot, man. That's Mr. Richard. I think Rex just pulled up. How you doing, Rex?
How you doing?
Good, buddy, good. Good to see you.
What's new, what's new?
Oh, not a whole lot, you tell me. I've been up here, I didn't come to the first me, uh, January meeting, so not really sure. Uh, I haven't been in either since I've been here, so.
Okay. Um, somebody, I had something for you.
Yes, sir, I'm live, so whatever's, we say is out there, so I'm.
Okay, well, talk to me after.
Okay, yes, sir.
I had something.
Okay. I'll try.
Guy that needs some help.
Okay, thank you, yes, sir, I will holler at you after the meeting.
Alright.
Well, he might got me some work, that'd be awesome. Nice, pretty sky. Alright, let me read some uh, comments here. Thomas, have you seen Russ? And Don? Um, I have seen Don, I haven't seen Russ. How's everybody doing? Y'all slam that thumbs up for me, please. We got a hundred and forty-one people in the chat. Thank you, hit that thumbs up. Slam that thing. There's no uh, super chats, I don't have no, um, thing where you get ten or no giveaway or nothing tonight, so. Not asking for anything. Well, everybody have and to let y'all know, like, the people that are care, that care or, or curious, I really don't care what Germ says at all. Let me face this to me. I really don't care what Germ has to say at all. Like, it just shows who he is. So, just wanted to put that out there. I like older women, so, here's what it is. You know? Uh, thank you Amber Lynn for the three dollars. Yes Rebecca, that is awesome. Looks like we got a cow, girl. All due respect. Oh yeah.
Evening, how are you?
Oh yeah. I've never seen her before. There's always different people coming here. Um, so. She was nice, she said hello, so. Deland, Florida, hope all good. Meeting tonight. Thank you. Oh, Kristi, that's too funny. Absolutely not. Thank you Kyle for the twenty dollar super chat. Love what you do, Thomas, keep up the good work, thank you very much, Kyle. Yes, thank y'all. Absolutely, Thomas, just keep doing what you, you're doing. I'll try my best. Let's see, what time is it? John Caps, yes, you are welcome, I try my best to keep it positive for most of the part, you know, most of the time, I try. So all you can do is try. Thank you Sharon. Think that's how you say it. Six forty-nine, eleven minutes. Few more people, Marty and Richard and we're all waiting over there. I think this is the attorney's car, it looks like the attorney car. Tam Tam, five dollar super chat. Thomas, not much, hope this helps. Keep smiling, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor, Mr. Carl. Watching from Marion County. Thank you. Not too far away. What's going on, Mr. Carl?
You're doing alright.
Good, good, good. Was you putting some groceries away when I came by?
Yeah, I came back from town, so.
There you go.
Put up before this.
There you go, yeah, we're fitting to get in there too, so.
Want me to say hi to them, I'll see them, sorry?
Yes, sir. Got some people waiting to go in, got about nine minutes. Going to chief on next month. What happened to the skinny guy that was elected originally? Um, I forget his name, um, somebody will know in the chat his name. He missed three or four meetings in a row, I don't know. So he's not on, he's legally, he's not on. But, I'm not sure. Chief and citizen, thank you, we got your back, brother. Looks like a nice night. Yeah, absolutely. Gee, thank you, thank you Thomas, this is by you and your pops of soda, thank you, twenty dollar super chat. Thank you so much. Alright, I think we're gonna get in there. Six fifty-two. Yes Rebecca, uh, she is awesome. They are awesome, I'm not sure if you're a female or a male. People have different names on here, some make up names, some have their personal name. And you ever know if they're who they say they are, or they just want their, don't want their identity shown, so I respect that. Hit that thumbs up, thank you. Uh-oh. Got a golf cart flying in. He's riding that thing, what up? What's going on, pal? I see you've been busy. Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's good. What time is it, Mr. Carl?
Uh, five till.
Five till, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you. Marty? Going in, y'all. We'll see y'all when y'all come in. Are you almost ruined?
No. I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. How you doing? Yeah, how are y'all? Yeah, yeah, I didn't make it. I'm here this month, so. No, no. I should've came, I was just hanging at the house, so. Figured I'd give y'all a break. Yes, sir. Okay. Alrighty, most definitely. Yes, sir. I'm live right now, so.
Have you spelled the board again? Have you spelled the board? Yeah.
Looks like they painted it. Looks good. Three hundred and eleven people in the chat, hit that thumbs up. Say here, the old little meeting? This is Marty's first meeting. You haven't cried?
We have two minutes. The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with the same justice for all.
Okay, just a reminder of uh, public comments, if you won't wanna come about something, put it in the box. Uh, otherwise, um, you know, all inquiries requested. Just to go, Carl? Rex?
Here.
Here.
Carl?
Here.
Myself, Jim, Megan, and going. And that's all of us, and the rest is here, so we got enough to get started. Alright, so is the core, um, uh, approval for the agenda?
I'll be the last one to approve it.
Second.
Second, on the paper line.
Aight.
Aight. Okay. Approved for the minutes for last month, just on seventh, Daniel, three six.
I want a measure.
All of us two, all paid them?
Aight.
Okay. Aight. Okay. Old business, we gotta read the ordinance. And this was the, um, second round. We missed out the second round and first round, so we're gonna do it on.
Well, this was my error because in the reading, you have an order to do a first reading. You have to put it in the paper ten days prior to the next reading.
Okay.
I kept this in the, the deadline for the paper, so this one was my error, so it's coming in, we're gonna do a first, again a first reading and start with a new heading of the twenty twenty-five, cuz it should've been twenty twenty-four, so we never did a second reading before that, but you still remember just cancel that.
Okay. So, you gonna read the titles?
Okay. Ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash oh one. And ordinance of the town of Waterbury, Florida, admitting the town charter and the town voting ordinance regarding elections. Changing the dates of announcements of date of election designation of seats available and qualifying dates. Adopting election procedures by ordinance. Repealing prior election procedures, resolutions, ordinances, and establishing an effective date.
Okay, um, and we gonna put some paper in?
It begins at one be published on the sixth of March, that's ten days prior to our next reading.
Okay, so I'm thinking we're gonna do this, reading this month. Good deal. Uh, old business, um, I do wanna talk about some, um, old business, this thing went off a while. We've had, um, discussions in the past on it, we discussed it and I'll agree on it, but we didn't do an official vote, so you can call for it. But, um, we had, uh, my permitting process for the RV park was done. It was a C one, and it was then as, um, we discussed it in, uh, previous, uh, it was done in the past already, so it was already accepted as a C one project. And also the, um, asphalt paving over roads were done as uh, the ordinance was also done a permit to expand parking without requiring the paving to be done. So it was two previous acts of, two since, I can't think of the name of the law.
Precedent.
Precedent, yes. The president set a precedence on to those two items. Uh, so, would like to ask for a motion to just another form of things, just a motion to accept this as a precedence and a second to accept that.
I'll make a question.
Second.
Second, all agree, aight?
Aight.
Just a little wish we got into minutes. Alright, um, selecting engineering firms for the community's thing. I have not heard about any of that, so.
I have not seen anything.
I did find out some things, we talked to different engineers, civil engineers and stuff about the project. But the project, the size of the project doesn't require civil engineer. So, it works off the D E P, ten G process plan. So comes all the agriculture, all the, um, groundwork, waters, uh, potential and stuff. And the building itself is less than nine thousand square feet. And it's less than four thousand square feet to do both, and now the really need is an architect and a structural engineer. So it kinda changes the categories to a much broader thing. I don't know, since we weren't advertised, this is the first before we advertised, and nobody submitted anything. Um, do we have to re-advertise it to seek out, find somebody else?
I guess my first question would be, have we looked, is there someone we can piggyback off of that, that has done a similar job or is offering similar services that we can use?
The engineers, it's too small of a project, we're saying for these guys to do the water pumps, but I don't understand why, because you know, this water project's six hundred thousand, we got nine hundred thousand to spend on the communities, and I don't see the logic in it, but it seems there's not enough funds there for their budget and to get the building structured. Now, the building does require a lot of money and structural wise in the water pump, but today, these water pumps and equipment, this thing is so damn expensive. We're having a hard time getting it done. The line, we had to kick out three years ago, done in the budget. The line, we had to kick out three years ago, down in the budget for the grant this year, so we're having trouble, trying to follow through on that.
What's the total cost of the project?
Well, the project has six hundred thousand on grant, but generally, time to do engineering and the management stuff, and the grant, like, it's on four hundred eighty-five thousand in manning, but these hydro tanks, the ten thousand gallon hydro tanks, you know, that runs out most of that, four hundred thousand, and I'd still have one big tank, doing this two individual tanks, so there's something to be done, to be done in these things, because quite honestly, the last two hurricanes, I worked around the clock, getting these tanks back up, because otherwise, without water, the D P's wouldn't know the company, the company gets back normal, because it crashed and smashed all the components on it. The, so if we done this apart, it is important, so we don't have, we're not sitting there stranded, but the other alternative is, is the variable speed pumps with a proper control system can be put in place with the motors that we have, and not need the tanks, so that leaves us the money to get the generator and the ground storage tank, so we actually double our ground storage capacity, and we got an appointment with the generator, and all we gotta do is modify the motors to the, to diodes, basically, I mean solid diodes, instead of pressure control switches, to make that work. So that, that's very possible to come out with sixty thousand gallons of ground storage and pumps, and we can keep the thousand gallon tank as a reservoir, it's just more pressure balanced, the power goes out. As a variable speed, when the power goes out, water's done. You know, right now, we got several hours, because we're running the pressure tank, and after the tanks taken away, then there's no power, no water, I mean immediately, the pressure of the pipes won't last very long, but there is a lot.
I don't like that idea.
But with the generator, getting the generator, now we got backup power, so we don't have to move out of that.
So in other words, we haven't heard anything from insurance about the tank that got it?
The insurance, we're working with them on that now, they're agreeing to pay for the tank to be replaced, and rebuild these two motors, there were two or three to talk about, and the money we're getting from this, hopefully we can use, the motors are gonna be used right now, can't wait for the grant, we gotta have it done. So, but the balance of this thing, the money for the tank can be used as part of funding to make sure we got enough to do the generator, the ground storage tank, and make sure all the equipment is correct up to date for that. Would like to replace this safety valve, come up covers on the pumps, because we got plastic valves on the ground, one of them are coming apart, some part of it, I love your levels, and the other one. Comes along, I mean, you did.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like there are some options, and we wanna kind of modify our request, or what we're looking for, you know, things like that.
The engineers working on that, I was trying to get back in on this week on what results were from the insurance quotes, from the tanks, we're waiting for a proposal on the tanks, and rebuild these two pumps, and these pumps are, they're a separate drive pump, but you can't just, once you take them apart, you gotta go into the motor now, you gotta realign everything, reboard everything, because they gotta be perfectly laser balanced, because it turns such a high RPM, it's too dangerous to just stick that gun to do it. So the repair of two motors is pretty drastic, this probably, I would imagine, we're talking thirty, forty thousand dollars for the two motors, and probably a hundred thousand for the tank, so it's usually a hundred and eighty thousand bucks, you know, repairs for that. Insurance companies, not bucking at all, they're just saying, same to us, same to us, same to us, so we're trying to get them to finish it. And then, okay, so we got them to console, okay? All right, we are talking about the new stuff. The new center has, we talked about that, and the grant is there, I would like to know what we need to do as far as seeking out and finding an architect engineer, structural engineer, do we have to re-advertise that?
I think that's the best practice, certainly.
Okay. Well, we did advertise this.
But if you didn't get any responses, I think, you know, that's why I thought the amount of money is given, that sum of money, obviously, is very significant, would be to re-advertise, see if we can, you know, catch a water lead, that kind of thing, see if we can get some money.
The only issue is time, isn't it, how much progress, can you give it an extension to July?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, from February to July.
Right, that's July of next year, twenty-sixth. Okay, so I guess the trick is, is just get a hold of some engineers, and tell them this is coming out, and try to see if we can, or we did the same thing with the other, but
There's some, like, local government websites, earth bids and things like that, I don't know if you utilize those, but we can, we have them, yeah, we can work on some of that.
All right. We'd like to go.
Okay, so our next issue of the order of business undergoes the resolution to convert the homeowners, the debt, the tag. The dividend resolution, it's resolution number twenty twenty pound dash oh two, it's a resolution of the town of Waterbury, Florida, determining the compensation of election officials and providing an effective date. This is the current credit rate in the group, her packets, again, what the current credit rate is for the homeowners, the inspectors, so we put it in writing for everybody to approve, and I have already accounted for it in the budget.
All right, so, more about what you can. You looking for voters?
Yes, I guess not.
Why you like to vote?
Sorry.
On the favor?
Aight.
Also, it's called, also on the show, it's probably more. So we got back to the going to administration, we got the candidates.
Yes, and I have already posted the, I gave everybody a talking of the set lines, about, the candidates for the two-year seats are Jeffrey Berry, Russell Meeks, here, Zim Patchett, Lynette Preston, Don Semenchar, and Rex Woods. The candidates for the one-year term, gone with the old timbers, so. So those are our candidates.
Awesome, we got two. Our maintenance is, we have Richard, that's been all over the minutes, we just washed up, talked to everybody, happy that, just as the negative waters are still around the top and stuff, the water's kind of perfectly clean, clear, the iron is not, is none involved in it, and tested all the sites that comes up here, so far, I've had a lot of comments to people's residents now that are still, they've got seen the results in their house now, so it's probably clear enough to use pipelines, although that could.
I'm getting a build up on stuff.
Oh, on it, but it's still hard water, hard water still there.
Oh, before, I didn't have a build up like this.
No.
I'm having to change my fish tank every other week, because, I mean, and lucky if we had to do it every six months.
Yeah. I don't know, can you say anything, I've noticed that I don't have any, I don't know, I know it's all water, I would like, yeah, it's very clear and stuff, I would have, yeah, I know, I know, I do the whole work, with the same shower, you did the same thing, and the glass and the shower will be all nasty, and within just two or three showers, and now the shower of the glass is clear, about a month, I think it's, it's out like that, I don't want us cleaning that much. All right, but anyway, Rich has been studying with that, helping on all these teams that we better make, and he's got the system down pretty well, and we got, we're still treating them a little bit, trying just to get the balance right, so we're not back washing two months for the new equipment. So, there is anything else on maintenance, we got?
No.
Okay. All right, public sector.
I was gonna mention something, but I talked about it previously, I can't, I never would, but the one thing I did want to ask about was animal control, we talked about it before.
We, we got to put a panel together, we gotta have a, we gotta have an appeals process, you know, the town doesn't have a board to have an appeals process, file a claim, we can do the process, but we don't give someone a place to take an appeals to, and it all gets rejected, anything you do gets undone, and it's just, you're spending money, and you don't have to, can't enforce it.
I was walking my little guy the other day, and I had three dogs run up behind me, all at separate times, and not in a nice way either.
No, I agree.
I mean, I picked my dog up and walked pretty fast to get away from him.
There is areas that's really bad, and obviously, somebody's bringing some dogs somewhere on the other side of twenty-four, because you can hear the dogs howling up there at night time, they were puppies, but now they've gotten bigger, so you can tell on the tone of bark, but, you know, I would think that, I mean, the sheriff says that they can't do anything about it, but animal control says they won't do anything about it, but we all pay our county taxes, just like everyone else in the county does, I think we would address them in a way that they should, to try to get them to respond to these services that our town doesn't have.
What we may have to do is go to one of the order kind of initial meetings, and bring that up as a.
Yeah, I mean, this, if every one of these citizens in our town pays the same taxes for that same services, everyone else in the county pays, for them to refuse us is not correct.
That's another way, we're just gonna have to go to one of the meetings, and bring it, or like, you know?
None of me.
Politics, and I'll stay in the office and don't be there, I'll give you a list of the questions, we even turned on lunch.
I've been to, went to town, asked on Tuesday and Wednesday, I went to six different meetings on Tuesday, and forty meetings on Wednesday, and I left early and had to come back, I was, those are regular meetings, those are, you know, you're going to the capital room, legislators, the representative's office, and which, you may just want to check together. I wish Swan, Swan Water Management has funded all the groundwork for the paperwork on the preliminary engineering, and for, they've funded now the money for a business study, which, on how you're gonna collect the money, and how you can spend the money, and how much is it gonna cost effectively, what's the cost per gallons for the towns, it's gonna be part of the curve, so you at least get that now, and we can have it, and we can all look at it ourselves, and say, hey, is this something that we want to continue to pursue?
Right.
Or is this something we need to jump ship on, I mean, for the need of it, I think we got to have it, but is it gonna cost us something more? I can see the time it's been over the water, and the sewer, the sewer's coming, it's gonna mandate this thing, cost is gonna go up, it's gonna cost, everybody tells, I think the water doesn't go up, and you're never gonna see it on top of that, coming back, it's coming, not this year, not next year, but the DEP rules of change in this requirement, now anybody that sees areas of this small quarter housing, has to get on this sewer system again, or you're gonna put these forty thousand dollar septic systems in, it's bigger than your yard, this can apply here as well, and so there's another alternative except for this type of water system.
Part of the grant money that we just, we might call it, is going to be part of that study that says, how close are we to God, to the coast flooding, you know, that we've been relying on flooding so far, with all the storms over there, but the shores change all the time, so that's gonna be part of that grant money is to say, hey, where do we stand, then we're gonna have, will we have to fall in sooner than later, getting that system in place, I consider, you know, it's the only coast, and it's, because we're close, is the first lines were less than one five miles from the Gulf?
Yeah, well, you get, you have to go up, I mean, yes, with all the board racing to do there, just about there, you know, all those canal, drainage canals and channels, they swarm on that, but they're all clogged, they got all kinds of loom, grass, and stuff is growing, that's why it takes them a long time to offer here.
But that doesn't tell us, when this is done, and then all those get the reports and all of that, so what do we, where we as a town stand on all of this?
Okay, building zoning and water, building the zone is pretty much the same, we haven't had any changes on that, we did put a request in, well, we're talking about that in the office next week, we put an inquiry to Joseph, the inspector, I probably do that next week, or did this week. Water, we talked about water already, we are having, we'd like to have an open house for the water plant, so the residents can come out and see all this, how all this is working, all the new filtrations, and what changes have been made, and see how the filters are working, and all of the details it took to get them there. I'm looking at Saturday the first, is good for me and my schedule, doing it from like eleven o'clock to one o'clock or something, and we can invite the neighbors and residents out, I'll rent a bunch of hamburgers and hot dogs, and cook them real, and then we'll text you some kids up, and we'll rent a bounce house, and that, I don't know, there's only three or four sources of children in our town, and there's half of them out there. You think that'd be something we'd be interested in doing, the kids coming over to the bounce house and cook down? All right, so we'll make sure the powder is official, blow it to Matt's house, because that takes the powder, so Saturday the first, we can rent it? Well, we'll do a building house at the water.
Okay, back on twenty-four.
Yeah, on twenty-four, and the neighbors have already said we can park in their yards for parking, so we figured eleven to one, Saturday the first, we can set them on twenty-four to the areas where everybody can park, so there is, I mean, it's not gonna be a voluntary park, but I'm not really expecting fifty people to come either, so, if we get twenty-five for a big one, I think we've done something.
Yeah, but you press for now.
Yeah, so, but it is really, it is worth coming and looking at and checking it out, because there is a lot of change there, it really looks good, it looks nice, and so we'll get, all right, anything else to do?
Not, not good, nope.
Okay, so then we are, we want to go to the announcements, or we want to go to public comments, are you seeing announcements, keep it out of there. Do you want to do the announcements?
All right, we're good. Children's Day was gonna be here on the twenty-eight, one thirty fifty-nine, like always, water house, water waste order meeting will be held on the nineteenth tomorrow at Maraca.
Public comments, I haven't seen them. All right, I guess that's gonna close this out here, I just want to thank everybody for coming out, and again, I just wanted to really let it be known, we appreciate your attendance and the thanks for turning around for my meetings a year, giving what they are today, how chaotic and messy it was, it's, it's a pleasure to sit in here and go through this line now, versus sitting here and helping the hair, because everybody's arguing and fussing. All right, I think we're all, we'll return the meeting when?
Thank everybody for coming.
Yeah, it was a simple meeting.
It's been up to, it's a little busy at the water plant.
A little bit.
A little bit.
A little bit, it's good.
It's looking good for the road, y'all getting the fence fixed over here?
Yeah, it's been replaced.
Yeah.
And that's the family, just water plant run, that's what it is.
Okay, I gotta get by there and check it out.
It's the bounce corner. It's the back corner next to the rivers.
Right, right, yeah, the back corner, and then over here, this one got fixed. Back corner, okay. Check it out. I'll get up to you, I'm coming to see you sometime, looks like your yard need a little mowing.
A little mowing?
I need a little extra money, you need, want me to finish mow it? Deliver it for you?
That's fine.
Alright, yeah, I'll call you and let you know before I do it. Be in there too, hope you use extra forty bucks.
I don't have to be arrested for twenty bucks once a month, to mow the little white house.
Yeah.
Across from the church, or...
White House Cross. Oh, here? Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
'Cause he offered it to me, and I told him, okay.
Yeah.
But I was thinking, you just...
Right.
I don't even know.
Okay, yeah, I'll get with you on that, thank you, Richard.
I gotta, I gotta run across town again, 'cause I gotta come like...
Yeah.
Every, every month or something?
Right. Alright, well, I'll stop by in a day or two, I'll give you a call, and we'll talk about it. Thank you, Richard. I'm live, so.
When you're not live, my sister Barbara, he is suggesting that I was setting up to...
Come get the stuff in the yard, you can get anything you want, or as much as you want. All over. Yes, so, so Blinda's gonna give me a phone number, and when it gets where we need it, I might give you a call, because I don't do yours. Alrighty. I'll come up here and see, I'm gonna give it to her, I'm live, so I don't want the people to get my number, but, but I'll, thank you, Mr. Rex. I ain't getting back on you. Okay. Good to see ya. Alright, Mr. Zim. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Richard, see y'all later, I'm gonna go out here and go live, and I'm gonna wait for you, Mr. Rex. So, no problems. Marty's over there being, so, I'm sure Connor's there, so. Thanks, George. I, my truck's down there, it's at my buddy's house, it's protected, but I will go down here and check it out. Plus, Marty was out here, he was sitting right over there. I don't know where he's there. I don't know where he's there, everybody's leaving, you know, so. No problems, nobody messing with nobody this meeting, so that's good. He didn't try, he flicked me off a little bit, right there in the town meeting, it's on video, but he might have just having his, made it, just having his finger like that, so it was no big deal. But, if you go back in the meeting, in the video, he had his finger out, but no biggie. He may have just had it like that, he may not have been flicking me off, so. Anyways. I gotta sit here and wait on Mr. Rex to get out, the new campground owner over here. Talk with him, he's coming out the door now. Thank y'all for watching, I wish I could stay on here anymore, but I need to chat with him. Y'all wanna stay on, let Marty film, just stay right here, you can say, talk to him, right here, you can read their comments. And just film me and him, we'll be right here, just...
Alright, just stay right here.
Just go back and forth, the area right here, you know. Yeah, just like that, and you can say, hey, how you doing?
How y'all doing today?
What time is it where y'all are at now? Is it snowing, how cold is it?
Hello, how y'all doing?
Me behind you. I'm sleeping. I live in the dark here, I don't have power or nothing.
Oh, that sucks.
Yeah. I'm working on it, though.
Yeah. Hello, how y'all doing?
Sorry to interrupt you.
Everybody's telling me hi, and they don't even know me. Hello? How's everybody doing tonight? I'm doing alright, but it's kinda chilly out here. That's why I moved to Florida, because I didn't like the snow, I'm from Ohio, so. That's where I'm booking on. Nope, I sure don't want no snow, I moved from there. I moved up there from Ohio, so. That's why I moved, is the snow. I'm moving this camera around for Tommy. People leaving the meeting. Everybody was telling me hi on here.
That's cool, yeah. Yeah. I was talking to Mr. Zim and Rex, told everybody bye, even told Radis bye, so. No hard feelings, hey, we're all, we're all humans, so. I don't know if my buddy is over here, I'll look like it, I'll chat with y'all for a little bit, we've been on for an hour. See. See you later. I don't know how to turn the light on, y'all saying, hey to Marty?
Yeah, he said, don't tell me hi.
That's cool. Oh, yeah.
That's why I moved to Florida.
Yeah, you know, like, like we say, we, we're respectful, I don't know why, my light ain't coming on. So. Yeah. It's probably snowing in some of the spots they're at. Thank you, Rebecca, I try to be respectful to everybody, even, hey, we don't see hi, it is what it is, I can still say bye and get them the peace sign. So. But yeah, I'm still alive, so. But anyways. We're just gonna chat with my buddy here for a second and get out of here. Oh, who's that? Oh, sorry, y'all. There we go, I must've hit a button, my little tripod thing was acting up.
Oh, yeah, it's a river. Wasn't like that when I moved here, it was still, but now it's raining.
Well, I don't wanna keep y'all all night, I could chat with y'all, when I get on here, time flies. So. But anyways. We'll get out of here, thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Mo. I'm not worried about him, I'm not worried about Radis, so. I'm not looking to get physical or anything, but I will, mark my words, I will stand my ground, if need be. So. Thomas, you have a great evening. Got something in the bushes over here. I don't know why I can't. Maybe I can turn my flashlight on, there we go, I got a little light on now. Ms. Blinda's still here, and that dude's still here, so. Anyways, we're gonna walk down here and check these lights out. These lights, they put all over Otter Creek, these streetlights. They lit up twenty-four going to my house to nineteen, the road Cedar Key is off of. Thank you, Funny. If y'all enjoyed the video, throw some hearts in the chat, please, slam that thumbs up, we got two hundred and eighty-eight people in the chat. If I missed any super chats or super thanks, thank y'all all very much. Thank y'all, we're just out here talking to Aunt, what's his name, Jeff? I kinda burned for it there for a second. Radis is leaving. That was him that just left, so. No problems, no altercations, I don't even think he made eye contact with me, so. Anyways. We're gonna get out of here. Thanks, everybody, John Cook, how are you? Kinda blurry. Funny Sunny, thank you so much for the forty, uh, uh, four dollars and ninety-nine super chat, thank you. Thanks, John. I try to do the best I can, you know that, man. And that's all you can do. Mo, 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 thank you. Miyagi, good stream, Thomas, thank you. I apologize for the strike and whatnot. Um, I apologize once again, so. Not hiding from nobody. I had two of the accidents happen, and YouTube notified me, and I thought it was somebody trolling, trying to steal that content, so. And yes, it's John's content that I have permission to use, and I've had it for over two years, dang near. Think I was one of the first persons to post it in a monetized channel. Don't quote me on that, but anyway, that's beside the point, I, I'm sorry, Miyagi. Some may know, some may not know, but it's no big deal, everything's good. I apologize. And that's one reason I do not use anybody else's footage, anybody, nobody, not even a minute of it, ten seconds of it, five seconds of it. I have never not used anybody's footage. You will get copyright striked so fast, and if they get mad at you and don't like you later on down the road, they can go back and copyright strike you. And you get copyright stritten for it. And if they did give you permission, then they can go back and do it, that's abuse of the copyright strike, um, system. So. I do not use any, anybody's footage or music in my videos unless it is supplied by YouTube. YouTube can supply you with some, um, music that they supply you, and they will not copyright strike, copyright strike you. Y'all are welcome, I enjoyed doing the live, I enjoyed tonight, it was a good night, no confrontations, nothing. Ms. Blinda's still down there chatting. And I think that might be the attorney, I think the white car that was up here by Mr. Rex was Mr. Zim. So. So, how, what's the weather like where y'all at? I'm gonna be on here for a few more minutes, five or ten more minutes, if that. What's the weather like where y'all at? Here, it's probably sixties. Um, it's the sixties probably, maybe somebody can tell me in the chat, and it's seven forty-four. Seven forty-four PM, it's probably sixties or so. Cold, 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 colder here, oh, I'm so sorry, I hate the cold, that good of twenty in Montana, oh, I'm so sorry, Rebecca. Holds for three fence posts, but it is too icy, cold to do it, wow. Alrighty, y'all. Feeling like about ten, zero, I thought I said ten, zero degrees here in Ireland, ooh. Thank you for the support, thank you for watching, and we got twelve forty-five AM here, oh, wow. Just finishing dinner, nine degrees here, high winds, fifteen feels like twenty-two, negative twenty-two, negative fifteen feels like negative twenty-two, wow. Eighteen here feels like zero. Got somebody coming. This way. Oh, so. Not sure who that is, Ms. Blinda's down there still, so everything must be okay. Alright. Well, ain't much going on here, I'm gonna get home. Two hu, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight people in the chat, slam that thumbs up button for y'all, for me, for everybody. Please, let's get it to two hundred, can we get it to two hundred? Two hundred and ninety-three people in the chat. I'm not sure who this is. Get out the way. Sorry for the bright light, y'all. That was Otter Creek Residence, so no biggie. I think that's Richard, and that's Blinda down there, friend there, and Mr. Marty. Friend there and Mr. Marty. Hundred and eighty-two thumbs ups. Heck, yeah, getting there. Let's hit two hundred, y'all. We can do it. Slam that thumbs up. Love you too. I love each and every one of y'all. Y'all are my YouTube family. And I don't, you know, on my lives, I don't have it where you have to be subscribed. If you're not subscribed, please subscribe. That'd be awesome. Hit that subscribe button and slam that thumbs up button for me. That'd be great. Leave me a comment. Thank, the last live I had, I talked about coins and selling. Go check my coins out. My coin video. Can't miss it. My thumbnail is, uh, coins on the thumbnail, so you can't miss it. It's about three or four or five videos down. Hey, little dude. Wave, but I don't know if you can see my hand. See if we can get some light. A little better. Uh, shadow. Just know, little dude, I'm waving at you. Thank you for watching, buddy. Our dog. Tell him I'm waving. I waved back at him, Rebecca. Hello from Pennsylvania. Dennis, how are you, buddy? I always see a new comment. Always read your comments, man. Just know I do. Come on, people, twelve more likes. Yes, sir, get on them, John. Thank you, buddy. Hundred and eighty-eight thumbs up. Two hundred, we can get two hundred thumbs up. Come on. Oh. Two hundred and thirty-nine people in the chat. I got a video, already uploaded it, edited and uploaded to YouTube already for tomorrow. I just gotta do a thumbnail and do the description and title for it. And it'll be out tomorrow, probably around between twelve and three o'clock, somewhere around there, maybe. Um, PM, so. I done it now. Good night, all. Lori, good night. I'm good. Thanks for the shout out. No problem, Dennis. Thank you for the support and watching. Hundred and ninety, Funny Sunny. Yeah, hundred and ninety-one thumbs up. We got nine more thumbs up to go. To all, have a blessed evening. Uncle Mike. Yes, sir, you as well. Good night, Thomas, Daisy. Good night to you as well. Hundred and ninety-three thumbs up. Oh, we're so close. So close. Two hundred and twenty-nine people in the chat. I'm always watching you. Thank you, Dennis. That's awesome. I appreciate it a lot. I see your comments. I read them all the time. I got a video coming out tomorrow. Um, and I think I got a couple shorts already, ready to go. Two hundred and one thumbs up. Thank you. Two hundred and one thumbs up. Thank you very much. I love it. Y'all are awesome, y'all. Y'all are awesome. I've enjoyed this night with y'all. Woo-hoo. Yay. Gotta let the dogs out before I hit the hay. Much love and respect to you, Thomas. Thanks. Thank you, chat. You made Tom's a happy man. Yes, yes, Mo. You're absolutely right. I am happy. Two hundred and two thumbs up. I made my goal. That's all I can ask for. And if we didn't make my goal, I still will love y'all. Always love y'all. Yeah, like I was saying, I'll give y'all a hint. Tomorrow, we got a video. It's me and Marty. We're building something. That's all I'm gonna tell y'all. So. Be looking forward to that one. Like I said, it'll be out between twelve and three o'clock PM tomorrow. It's Wednesday, so. That's that. I am dogs down there. And the attorney, I think, or Zim and attorney drives vehicle like that white SUV, so I'm not sure. Little dude, I have a new friend called Little Dude. Heck, yeah. Chief from Citizen, Miyagi knows how to roll. Ta-ta. That's cool, I will. He said, you sure do, honey. Give Marty a good night shout out from me. Alright, little Mo. Marty! Marty! Lori said good night. Say it again.
Good night, Lori.
Okay. He said, uh, good night. He give it a, he gave y'all a wave and said, good night, Lori. Stay strong, Thomas, most definitely, Daisy. Heck, yeah. Two hundred and four thumbs up. Got what I wished for. Nothing wrong with that. Love y'all. Y'all have a good night. We'll probably hit two oh five before I exit out of here. I gotta go. Thanks, Thomas. Bye, y'all. Bye, Miyagi. Two hundred and five thumbs ups. Can't believe it. Two hundred and forty-four in the chat. Alright, y'all. I'm gonna get off of here and get home. And, uh, we'll see you tomorrow sometime. Love y'all. Peace. Let me see here. Try to Actually, figuring this out. Alright, y'all. Love y'all.